I studied. It's what we have other things we like to do, but during career. So anyway.
Listen to this.
Land use knowledge, we respect land use knowledge, we live in the community. So that's just one year. Anyway, um. So uh we will um. We'll comment from the listener right so when this is properly before us. This is for us. Okay. A overview by the planning. Do you want this? Sure, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Alright.
Good evening, everyone. Uh for those of you who don't know by now, uh my name is Gar Sirkus and I'm the seizure planner. So uh we'll start uh just very briefly here with uh a quick uh overview of the uh public hearing reports. So this is essentially how we are here. Uh so this lays out the uh motions and the series of events that that brought us to this to this point. Uh actually, we came back in twenty thirteen when council initiated a municipal plan review, uh which led ultimately into doing the village plan review. Uh and so since twenty twenty, we've been working on uh the village plan review documents. Uh so the report here summarizes the public engagement events that we did each uh year twenty twenty to twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, twenty three, and up to date here in twenty four. Uh so essentially, uh this is part of our legislative requirement to ensure that we are applying these meetings uh in accordance with the municipal legislation. Uh and uh ultimately, uh this brings us to uh to the next public hearing. So I'll just switch over to some slides here. And uh this will be a brief uh brief overview of the of the planning documents. Um for those of you who were at uh the previous public hearing on July eleventh, uh some of this will be uh familiar, uh but I also updated it since that time to reflect the changes that council uh has directed and that myself and staff have undertaken to to make to the documents. So uh again, just a brief bit of background here began in twenty twenty. That was following the municipal plan review, which covered everything outside of the village of Chester. Uh and the goal was to update the plan, uh to protect the local field of the village, maintaining a consistent a consistent style with the municipal planning strategy that had just been adopted, uh addressing the new or emerging issues that have arisen since two thousand four, since this plan was written, uh and and reviewing and updating any regulations that were in place that were working, but maybe could be tweaked to become more effective. So uh we'll go through all of this, but this is essentially a summary of the public engagement events that we that we did. Uh so each of the years, and they basically build upon each other. So in twenty twenty, it was sort of uh high level efficiency exercises and asking questions about what kinds of things do you like, whether you need to pay to live it or what do you dislike? And then from there, we come in um through twenty twenty one with a household survey to ask about a number of land use topics. Uh and uh in twenty twenty two, again, I started to uh do a detailed study on architectural controls and held some uh workshops around the proposed zoning uh for the highway three area. Uh in twenty twenty three, we released the first draft of the planning strategy and land use by law. We held a series of meetings uh and then brought the feedback from those meetings back to council last fall uh with a what we called a what we heard report. Council directed us to make a series of changes there. Draft two was released uh in March of this year. Uh and again, we held a couple of public engagement meetings, brought back final changes. Uh draft three was presented uh to council May thirtieth. We held a public hearing, as I mentioned, on July eleventh, and at that point, council was not prepared to pass the documents. So they sent it back again for additional changes. And that brings us to tonight's uh second public hearing. So just to give you a quick overview of the documents themselves. So first, we'll talk about the secondary planning strategy or the SPS. Um the the strategy is is sort of the vision in the policy document, and then the land use by law is the the regulatory document that accompanies it, so they work together. Uh but the secondary plan uh uses something called character areas. Uh and that's uh something that's carried over from the municipal planning strategy. Essentially, it breaks up the the village in this case into three uh distinct character areas. They each have are described. Uh it has to do with the form and the type of development you find there, the types of uses, business, commercial uses, those kind of things. Um and and then from there, there's a series of zones that are permitted within each of those character areas. We also have in the plan uh something called overlays. So these offer an additional layer of protection uh for specific purposes. So around lakes uh for the old stone bridge of Victoria. Uh and uh those in those cases, some of those were existing regulations that we just brought forward to make them more prominent and more notable in the plan, just to ensure that they wouldn't you know wouldn't be missed. So this is the map that shows the character areas. The colors are probably washed out on the screen, but essentially, um the dark purple, uh which makes up sort of the core of the village and the peninsula is that's the village core and municipal area. The uh the green color is the village boundary area, and then right along highway three, uh the orange is the North Street area. So uh as I mentioned, the secondary planning strategy uh outlines the purpose, the vision and goals of the document, and therefore, the future of development in the municipality or at least the village. Um so there's a series of shared goals that are shared with the municipal planning strategy, but then there are some specific village goals, um essentially, that the existing village character is the main point of reference for new development. Uh that it's primarily a residential uh environment that respects traditional architectural styles and forms uh and maintaining character through regulations for new development to enhance uh surrounding structures in the streets case. So those are some of the specific goals in the secondary plan uh that aren't necessarily shared with the rest of the municipality, where things like architectural controls aren't as prevalent or don't exist at all. So the secondary plan also includes uh a number of policies on issues associated with land use planning, but that are directly, uh you know, planning issues. Uh so you can see a selection of them here. Um in many cases, these are um collaborative type policies saying, you know, council will uh you know, will continue to promote heritage protection, for example, those kind of things. Or, you know, council will work with uh Chester Art Center to promote public art, those kind of things. So it's so it's often the plan referencing other organizations or other plans or other uh initiatives in the municipality to try to tie land use to those other strategic priorities and plans that are being undertaken. The secondary plan also includes um all of the zones that fit into those character areas that we looked at. Uh and so we will start to dig into the zones just a little bit here. So this slide uh shows, this has been revised, for those of you that may have seen this uh before. There's been some changes recently, which we will uh go through here. But essentially, uh on the left here, you see the existing zones that are currently in place today. And on the right are the uh the new proposed zones. Uh like I said, I'll go I'll go through these most of these in in more detail here. Uh this is just to give you an idea of sort of the some, in some cases, this actually, in many cases, the zone boundaries are staying the same or quite similar, but the name of the zone may have changed. For example, we used to have all of the residential zones having a unique, specific name, like the estate residential zone, the central village residential zone. We changed that in the new plan to a series of R one through R five. It's a more standardized way of uh naming zones and planning. It's going to be more familiar to, I think, more people. Uh and it also takes away uh any sort of stigma or loaded terms that can be associated with some of those uh zones. That was identified early on by the Village Planning Advisory Committee and also the public engagement that uh some of those existing names may carry uh carry a little bit of weight that they aren't necessarily intended to. So um to to jump into the character areas of the zones here, so as I mentioned, the village core and peninsula area, this is the historic center of the village, as well as the three surrounding uh peninsulas. It's a well-established residential neighborhoods and the traditional commercial core. Uh we have many of the lots that reflect or retain the original lot size from the uh original uh subdivision down in seventeen sixty. Um and the new plan is uh promoting what we're what we're calling gentle density, although, and again, for those of you who have followed the process, um things have been scaled back quite uh quite significantly from what was initially proposed. So uh that that term, I guess, could be subjective. So the village core uh peninsula area zones, so these are the uh zones that fall within that area. So essentially, we have the residential one zone. This was formerly the estate residential zone, primarily over on the three peninsulas. Um that zone has maintained its existing large lot size and has no increase in the number of dwelling units that are permitted. So currently, you can do two dwelling units in that zone. Going forward, you can do two in that zone. The residential two zone, this is formerly the central village residential zone. So this is sort of in what I would call the core of the village. Um this uh in red, if you're if you're able to see it, I'll I'll bring it up. This this reflects the change that's happened since July eleven, since the public hearing. Uh so formerly, what was proposed for the R two zone was a single unit or a two unit building, as well as an additional accessory dwelling unit. And an accessory dwelling unit is not, it is a third unit, but it's not equal to those other two units. It has to be smaller, it has to be a maximum of a thousand square feet in size, and there are some other regulations that go along with it. But essentially, if you want to just count the number of dwelling units, I'm not concerned about the how large they can be. In R two, previously, three units were proposed. This has now come down to two units. So essentially, what can be built now is one single unit dwelling and one accessory dwelling unit per per lot. And that accessory dwelling unit, that can be a basement apartment, that again, limited to a thousand square feet. It could be on top of a garage, uh a granny flat or an in-law suite, I hear those terms. Uh or it could be, again, sometimes referred to as a garden suite or a backyard suite. So it could be in it could be in a variety of locations, but it's uh strictly limited in its size. Uh and there are some other uh regulations there as well. The core commercial zone, um so this is the primary commercial zone that you find on Queen Pleasant and Valley Road. Um and this uh previously, uh in the version you would have seen on July eleventh, was proposed to be expanded to sort of connect the two existing commercial areas that have been in place since uh two thousand four. Um there was some uh some feedback that that was not non-desire and that folks would like to keep things residential where they currently are. And so council gave us that direction. So currently, the core commercial zone is in exactly the same place as the existing commercial zone is. So there's been no change or no expansion uh of that area. So this is the zoning map, uh and I'll just point out again, uh so the the yellow zone is the uh the R one, or the formerly state residential zone. Uh the orange in the core there, that's the R two zone, formerly the central village residential. Uh and then there are the core commercial is in the the dark purple. And so again, you can see the extent of that along Valley Road, um and then down to Queen Pleasant and and to where the traditional uh commercial uses have been. So the next character area we'll talk about is the village boundary area. So this is applied to lands outside the traditional center of the village. Um there's three clusters, which we'll take a look at in a moment on the zoning map. Um there's a history of more mixed use, mixed land uses out here and more sort of rural uses. Um and the new plan focuses on allowance for a variety of housing types and densities uh in this in this zone, or this area, I should say. So there's two zones that make up the village boundary area, and and you'll see a red here, the changes that have happened since uh July eleventh. So the residential three zone, this is a, and I'll I'll say a new zone. This did not exist when we talked on July eleventh. Uh this zone uh has been put in place for C wins subdivision, and it allows a single unit dwelling and one accessory dwelling unit per lot. Uh there were, there was feedback from residents of that area uh that they did not uh were not looking to uh have any more than basically one or one unit in an accessory dwelling per lot. Uh so that direction was given, and and that new zone has been made. So uh I'll show that on the zoning map in a moment. Uh and then the other zone here is the R four zone, which was formerly the R three zone. Otherwise, that's only hasn't changed. It's just we had to bump up the numbers to add this new um R three zone for C wins. So again, it goes back to the zoning map here, uh the uh point here, the light, the light pink here, that's the R four color. Uh and then that one section of the ground, if you're able to see that, that's a C wins off Haddon Hill. That is the uh the R three zone, the new zone that we've been looking to do.
Maybe if we turn the the lights down, we'll see the.
Sure. Sorry, you want me to sit where?
Oh, he's got, oh, he's got a look at his stuff, but I know.
No, it's more comfortable right.
Thank you, thank you.
Again, he can go backwards a couple of cheap slides. Back to the maps, please.
That is clearer for sure, thank you. He can't.
Just let me know.
That is clearer.
So pink is R four.
Pink is R four.
Yes, uh yeah, the pink, the pinkish peachish color looks like in the top left here, that's that's R four. And then you can see a few other sections.
Brown pig loop is also R four. And R five is the stuff near the uh.
Yes, or yeah, we haven't haven't gone there yet, but yes, that's the bright red up by highway three.
Do you have a light pointer, sir, that you could?
I don't, unfortunately, I'm sorry. Uh so C wins is off of off of Haddon Hill. It's the the just above the green mine with P, if you see that, there's the brown section there. So that's C wins subdivision, and that's the new R three zone that we've put in place. And again, that was due to a significant number of coworkers that came in uh as part of the feedback we had last time. Okay, so I think I'll just keep moving here. Um so the final area that we're going to talk about is the North Street area. So this applies to lands adjacent to North Street or Highway three. Uh it's located obviously north of the village core, serves as the main entry points to the village. Traditionally, again, there has been a mix of commercial and residential uses there. Uh and this plan uh essentially reduces the amount of commercial area, um but will uh rezone some areas previously so commercial for uh a variety of housing options as a as a residential zone. So again, there's there's two zones in the North Street area. We have the residential five zone. Um this has been changed, again, in red text there, you'll see what's changed. So one is proposed now in R five is one to four units by development permit or by right, which essentially means if you meet the provisions in the land use by law, you're able to meet your setbacks from your property lines, you meet the height regulations, you come in and make an application, you get your permit. So you could build up to four units on a lot through that process, so there'd be no need for notification. And then if you wanted to build more than four units on a lot, uh you'd go through something called site plan approval, which is a step up from just a regular development permit. Uh there's a lot more um submissions required from the applicant, things like stormwater management plans, uh screen, you know, from adjacent properties, target areas and those kind of things. And so if you're a site plan approval, uh you would be able to go uh between five and twelve units per lot. And the change in height zone is that previously on July eleventh, it was one to eight units by permit and nine units plus with no upper cap by development agreement. And development agreement is something we haven't talked about. So there's eventually in planning, I'll just take a short pause to try to look through this. There's three approval processes that we deal with typically in planning. There's permit, or as I mentioned, is you come in and meet the provisions of the bylaw, your your simple yard setbacks, your height limit. You get your permit and you're off to off to the races. The site plan approval, like I said, is a step up from that. It requires much more detailed submissions, which are reviewed by our development team. And there is a neighborhood notification in that case, but it's at the end of the process. And the neighborhood notification allows somebody to appeal that approval if they feel that an error has been made. Not that they don't like it, but that an error has been made in approving it. So it's a it's a specific type of appeal. That's the second, first of the development permit, site plan approval, and then development agreement, which is the the third planning approval process. That is a negotiated contract with council uh subject to a series of policies that are contained in the secondary planning strategy. Again, those policies speak to things like showing that there's adequate water, uh showing that there's parking, showing that the architectural design meets uh meets the regulations, um showing that the access to the site is safe, that it can be served by sewer and water, uh all of those kinds of things. Um and so that development agreement involves the most amount of public notification. There are public meetings before the development agreement is considered. Um and then there's a public hearing much later tonight before a development agreement is approved or rejected. So I just wanted to take a moment to talk about that, so that hopefully you'll see sort of the difference here. So basically, this zone has been scaled back significantly. The amount of development permitted by right has been halved. And while the level of rigor for approval has come down to cycling approval, it's only now allowing five to twelve units rather than nine to whatever you could reasonably try to show you could squeeze in there. So that's the R five. Then again, I'll bring up the map in just a second to take a look. Okay, so that was her solicitor, Sam, and he was just reminding me that uh what was with the site plan approval process that I had mentioned, uh like I said, there is a neighborhood notification and an appeal. Uh that was where I was seeing if if you feel that an error has been made in approving it. That appeal is heard by your councils. Through a development agreement, the negotiated contract with council, if uh if uh you know, resident or the applicant feels that council has gone against their policies that are laid out in the plan, uh they can appeal that to the no-sociated utility review board. So it's a it's a different level appeal, which is again, another important point between those different kinds of uh approval assesses. Thanks, Sam. Uh so yeah, so one last time, I believe this is the zoning map. So uh again, in the bright red, uh that is the R five zone, where again, one to four units by permit and five to twelve by site plan approval. And then and then the lighter purple color that's also over along highway three is the highway commercial zone. Uh that's a zone that exists today and is largely unchanged, other than it's been reduced in its area a little bit. Uh but it produce it permits a variety of commercial uses and is a bit more permissive than than the core commercial zone. One example being drive-throughs aren't permitted in the core commercial zone, but they are permitted in the highway commercial zone. And then finally, the last category of zones is zones that are permitted in all areas. So these are, there's a few zones in the plan that just might, for a variety of reasons. Sorry, we're just not taking questions. Right now. So there's three zones here, essentially, the institutional zone, the parks and open space zone, and the ocean infill zone. Uh and those can occur in any of the character areas um for, you know, again, we would want to allow parks in in all areas, for example. So that uh concludes my my brief overview. Um in terms of where things go from here, uh this is just a, I guess, a a little uh diagram that you can see. So we're again, have public hearing tonight. Uh typically, after the public hearing, council uh may choose to to vote. Uh and if they do and approve this, then we would send the documents to the province for review. Uh once we hear back that everything looks good from them, then we write it in the newspaper and that makes the new documents effective. Uh or uh as we've done prior, uh council can send them back for uh for further changes. So uh with that, I will uh turn it back over to the warden. Hey, thank you, Eric. It's not a simple fact, it's a complex one. I'm glad we had him. Anyway, so that is the overview, and um the recommendation at this point is to redock, but we aren't we aren't at that stage yet. It's now where we will open it to comments from the public, and just so that everybody's aware, we have received numerous written submissions. I don't know if we want to break them all off. But I think it's twenty twenty five particular written submissions that council has already received and had had reviewed. Uh just before we open, I mean, we we did have the last public meeting in July. And uh, you know, I, whether satisfied is everybody or not, I I doubt it, but uh we have made significant changes to the document since then to try to reflect what we heard at that meeting. So that's where we are. So and now, uh if you'd like to speak, if you put your hand up, then I'll acknowledge, yes, Gail first. Just you have to state your name and city address, you know, all that.
Gail Smith. I live at three nine six six. My phone number's almost identical. And it might be totally confused. Now, when we look back at the planning strategy, uh I see the property across the street from me on highway three is still zoned as commercial. That's where the Hovel Industries was. And I had this out with Jeff years ago because he had grand plans for something to go in there. And at the highway, right way is a hundred feet wide. And the center line isn't necessarily in the center of that one hundred foot runway. The center line is fourteen feet from my property amount. So that leaves a lot of space for highway property in midair, in thin air. And then there's a road that you have to have so many feet back from. So I think that that property would be better zoned uh differently than it would be some commercial, because there's not space really for any sizable or even small commercial development. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, thanks. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Phil Don, and I live here in Chester on Pleasant Street. Um I've got a few questions, actually, which I'm trying to be as brief as I can. First is related to the uh presentation. Could both show us, I think it was about the third slide, I'd like to raise a a point that was mentioned in the slide, because I think it's relevant about the vision and when taking the character. I'm not sure that we used the word vision on the slide. Is it possible to show the slide?
Uh if we if we knew which one was, I I just.
Um.
Was it a map?
It was right towards the very beginning of your presentation.
This is vision goals, is that what you were referring to?
Is is this the?
Beginning.
Yeah. I I don't know which one you want, this is probably the one, I think.
Well, it was it was regarding the respective traditional architectural styles and all. And the obvious that was attached, actually, because it's not vision goals.
It's a map.
So my question to council is, is this vision your vision? Because we do know that there are properties that have been built, which is really not following the character traditionally of the existing uh architectural styles within the village. So I'm not sure, this is somewhat confusing, maybe you can clarify that for us.
I'll try. Um what what has been built has been built based on the existing regulations, so that's that's where we are.
So there's regulations and then there's uh traditional architectural styles, which seems somewhat random perhaps, but there is quite a difference.
Yes, but but what has taken place to date is based on the bylaws, the land use policy that currently exists. So they were allowed to do it based on that.
Yes, I understand that.
Now, moving forward, the vision is partly council, it's partly what we heard from the public, it's a combination of all of it, because we heard a lot of different things, and then it's up to council to entirely determine what that is.
So there's no clear answer, you're saying?
There is not.
Okay. So my second question I have to you is regarding, does council agree or agree that there is a water issue within the village?
We are aware that there is, yes.
So have you thought of how to maintain and how to provide water supply given the fact that there could potentially be additional dwellings within the village?
We are currently at doing well tests all over the place. We have been doing it for years, trying to find a suitable water supply. Uh we have a a program in place where we can help people to build new wells, to put filtration systems on, uh to do um systems. So I mean, we're working on it, have we solved it enough?
So have you, I mean, I'm sure you've seriously considered options. But to me, one of the simplest options, and I'm not an expert in this at all, is actually to ensure that any new build has a system. And that 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 property will actually primarily use the system, and if they have a well, to use the well as a backup, so that it's not compromising uh the properties within the area. Is that feasible?
It's a possibility, we we haven't gone there yet.
Will you build that?
It's possible.
It would be great.
Well, I mean, it isn't policy now, I don't make policy on my own site.
So how how would we get this rid? So if you discuss it and we can, we can actually be reassured that you will discuss this option.
We are, we are discussing all kinds of.
We are discussing all kinds of options.
I'm a village resident here, but it would be important that we get feedback from you promptly and not with a delay, and then it's too late to get anything done or to a discussion. Because we want to be very impactful for those that are living here and those that might wish to move here who would be residents.
I'd answer it better.
Okay. So the next question, I want to say my last question, is with increasing density, there will be pressure on people's water systems. What we know, there's a clear example that's been happening in the last over a year now on a property here in Chester on King Street. The well water has been compromised by the dumping of contaminated waste on a new, on a property that's been renovated. The dumping has left the property with contamination from council-inducing hydrocarbons. And don't want to waste your time on all of this, but the reason I'm raising this is, by increasing the density of properties, we potentially will increase the risk from such events happening in the future, because there is so little regulatory control that you as a municipality have over such events. The people who are affected by this are distraught completely. And there is an ongoing investigation into it currently. But we would like, I think, I'm speaking to myself, apparently, but I'm sure it's a reflection of what many people think, that really tightening some of the control on this potential problem by the municipality would really encourage everybody that the municipality is working alongside with those people within Chester.
I appreciate your comments and measure, we are not in control of that particular issue, are aware of it and the problems, notified.
Of course, but would you like to introduce potentially some of the bylaws? If you are going to increase the density of dwellings?
We can consider what we have the ability to do with some of the outside of our extension.
That doesn't sound a very...
Some of the outside of our extension.
I think our health is very important here in the village.
Yes, but it's outside of, it's outside of the land use policy by law. So it's not really today's issue.
Why is it?
It's not a issue, but if we really increase the density, there is a water issue and people as you mentioned are dependent on their waters.
Yes.
I'm not probably, I live on Martha's Drive. Do you not think that you should perhaps figure out what the water system and what's going to happen before you increase the density?
This is a large issue and as of the last meeting, we reduced the density considerably. And if you look at the existing land use policy, it's quite large density laws. If we don't make it.
I didn't hear what you said.
I said that we were well aware of the issue and we're taking actions to try to correct the water issues outside of our...
Which you're talking about passing a new density laws today. I haven't figured out the one.
We have made some reductions since the last meeting, since the first draft of this plan to decrease that density, as people have suggested we do. And, you know, and if you look at the existing land use plan, there's a fair bit of flexibility already. This actually reduces in many respects.
Thank goodness.
Yes, sir.
Okay, sorry.
Just without, and like Nicholas Lewin, 36 Queen Street. I'm a bit biased, I'm going to talk about the area I live in, the western side of the village R2 boundary proposed. It strikes me that there's a natural geographic bridge that separates sort of a quarter mile in from the shoreline on the western side of the village.
And you've been...
But you've got to talk into the, I don't think it's on.
I think the mic's turned off.
No. Pardon.
You've got to go way up, way up.
I think in the western side of the village, there, in the R2 zone being proposed, about a quarter mile in from the shoreline, there are relatively estate-style houses along that boundary. There's a natural geographic bridge there. I'm not quite sure why that's all put together with the village. But I would propose that, I'm not sure exactly where the line is, kind of a quarter mile in from the shoreline, look, western shore is quite a bit harder than some. And it seems like a fifth more would be all the way.
Thank you, your time. I think that's the next, I think I saw your main thing. Okay. I could keep track.
Hello, my name is Peggy Wilson. Gareth covered a few things that I wanted to talk about tonight, but I will just ask for a clarification on one of the items. With the email that was sent out from the municipal, municipality of Chester Village Planning Review, August 27, you highlighted some things that had changed. One of the things was the reduction in the proposed density in the core of the village by removing duplexes. I understand that and you've covered that very well, but I would think that your document, your land use file document, the description or the definition of a dwelling unit needs to be amended. And also, page 79, section 5.3.45, which talks about when an accessory dwelling unit is proposed, be located within the main building, the design shall result in the appearance of a single-lit dwelling when viewed from the public street. The structure shall maintain the appearance of a single front entrance with additional entrances at the rear or access through a common vestibule. I'm sure this is an oversight, but it is a document that we're going to vote on tonight. There are some changes that need to be made in terms of those definitions.
Thank you.
I'm going to move on to my talk for tonight. You covered a few of the other items. Since 1716, as you stated here, the village of Chester has evolved, becoming a destination for tourism, culture, and recreation. A village that has been fortunate to have residents who understand the uniqueness of this place we call home and work to safeguard and preserve it for future generations. The village of Chester planning documents seek to preserve the cherished character of the village of Chester, often described as the Chester look. In the vision and goals section of your plan, you state that you safeguard its natural environment by encouraging the protection of water quality, ensuring that identification of potential drinking water supply, that drinking water supplies are protected, and treating and managing stormwater and wastewater, reducing the impact of developmental natural environment. Your document states engagement during the creation of a secondary planning strategy has clearly indicated that existing residents wish to maintain the existing form, density, and structure of the village. Comments that growth should occur only outside of the village core are the common sentiments heard. Without immediate plans to construct a municipal water system or directly understand the underlying aquifer, council generally agrees with the reaction from the residents, and this plan now largely asks to preserve rather than expand the existing residential community in the core of the village. Your policy approach states these policies and regulations have adapted since first introduced in 1976. However, the longstanding approach within the village of Chester votes on maintaining, preserving, and enhancing the existing community charm of the village. In your housing section of the secondary planning strategy, there are two sections that I would like to highlight or quote. Within the core of the village, large multi-unit dwellings are typically incompatible with the well-established character style and density. The lack of a central water system, coupled with uncertainty around groundwater, has led to a strong opposition to densification at any level. Council has identified affordable housing as strategic priority and is working towards creating an affordable housing strategy. However, following strong community opposition to an increase in housing within the village, council will now focus on areas outside of the village to achieve the vast majority of housing goals. The North Street area, previously known as Highway 3 development area, is one area within the village where multi-unit dwellings of more than two dwelling units can be approximately cited. Most of what I just read is directly from the current draft, draft four of the secondary planning strategy. It all sounds great, so why are we here? Village core, 10-unit buildings, core road infrastructure, water issues, increased commercial development within the village core, up to 16 permitted uses not requiring onsite parking, all of which contradicts what you, what I just read as your vision, your goals, your approach, your policies. So why is the focus of this document still intent on increasing the density of the village core, which with the ability to have up to 10 multi-unit buildings anywhere in the village core that will allow for it, when we have clearly stated that we do not want this? Why is it that when we mention changes to the commercial core, councillors' first response is concerns for developers, not residents? That's a larger question. We are residents of this village, we are a proud roots group that have been addressing and informing its residents on issues for, on many fronts for the last 14 months. We feel we're not there yet, this plan has not been approved, so whatever we need, there is still time to work until we reach some common ground. Thank you.
My name is Denise Page-Sonrickus, and I live at 186...
Can you hear me?
Yep. No, I need to talk close to my...
Yes.
I'm probably close. I live at 186 King Street. And as many of you know, on Queen Street, we had some, I guess they're complexes built. And what was unfortunate is that I think that there were some bylaws that were not followed because they said they'll probably be in the new plan. So I don't know how sometimes the bylaws slip by and other times people are given a headache over a bylaw for the property. But I'm following up, that was great, Peggy, because this is what I'm following up on. The public, to do planning in the past was very important for any council or any municipality. And it really drove the process. But in today's world, it is not the driver of a process for your community until you connect it with your other strategies. And that has not happened here in Chester municipality or village of Chester. The first thing is climate change. Really, I know people are probably sick of hearing it, but everybody has experienced it. And we have to take a hold of that. And that is one of the most important plans that you need as a municipality right now. And the problem being is you're doing it backwards. The planning now should come about after you've looked at your climate plan actions. And I know your plan is actually pretty good in periods of other municipalities, and I would encourage you to spend more time in that and have your staff involved. There's a lot of programs, provincially and federally, that support municipalities, and there's a lot of municipalities that have done quite well with your climate change. I think the municipality of Lubbock has a very extensive climate change. We know the part of the climate change is affecting our water. And so you need to be looking at, we know we talked about that over and over, but I don't understand how 2017 was that the council could actually have a commission of water strategy and totally ignore it. You may not feel like you're ignoring it, but you are, because the company and the hydrologist says, and anybody can get this off the internet, says that you do not want to, in the village of Chester, to increase any development or density until you take care of your water problem. I know that you're very anxious to get this pushed through because it has been a long time, but please, please, consider the fact that that should not be a driving factor. That's what's creating all these problems, is because of the water strategy that you have ignored, the climate change, which is critical, which would even include what places would be built with, all sorts of things. And I don't see anything in your plan that connects or references your climate plan or your water strategy. So here is, you have a responsibility as councillors, I know it's not easy work, but please, please, consider the fact that councils have statutory responsibilities to avoid or migrate natural hazards and to have regard to the effects of climate change when making certain decisions. There are also responsibilities for civil defense and emergency management, as well as improving community resilience through public education and local planning. So you do have really a legal responsibility to carry this over in the proper steps. And I would ask you to pause this plan, and I know that you're very anxious and the staff are pushing you hard on this, but please pause it, like Peggy said, take a look at developing your climate strategy, your climate change strategy, and look at the water. And the other thing, density, where is your proof? I haven't heard what. What, why are you so keen on density in the village area? It really does not work, because that's part of your housing strategy. But I know you don't have housing strategy. And I would encourage you to have one, not about the village of Chester, but in the outskirts, there's a lot of areas that you can come together with the community and start there at those community levels and find out what kind of housing is needed. That is what is a crisis now, not your planning right now, that's been delayed for how many years, 10 years? So look at the crisis. And I really would encourage you to have a housing planning strategy for the whole municipality. And then you wouldn't have so much of a desire to build up Chester, right? And I'm on a property that used to be owned by my grandmother, and now I have those places, I have no privacy, they can look down right into the valley now. There's the trees, we're all taking down, that's another thing when you're developing and planning. You want to have that green barrier between the homes, and that's really important, that doesn't happen, because they'll all break down and... So in closing, because I know a lot of other people have, need to have the opportunity to speak, I would ask the council tonight, under your legal responsibility, to pause this process, start the housing strategy, develop a better climate change strategy, and take care of the water issues. I know it's difficult, but I would ask you, please, do that. Because once you pass this, you never can go back. So please, you have to consider, this is our home, and I don't think we're being unreasonable to ask for you to take those steps and put this on pause. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Shannon Black. I live on 65 Duke Street.
Into the mic.
I want to first of all just thank council very much for their engagement since the last public hearing. It was really heartening to watch the meeting, the committee as a whole, and see how much impact residents' feedback had on members from other districts, as well as the warden and Mr. Wells, and the rest of, and, excuse me, everybody, but there were some clear statements of recognition of the urgency of this matter and how much it matters. So thank you very much for that. I just would like to follow up on the warden's comment about water not being in the jurisdiction of the council, and I am curious about that because the province has issued a statement of intention around water supplies in municipalities and has mandated that all planning documents should address municipal water supplies--
Just to clarify that, I wasn't talking about water not being an issue, it was the pollution that was being dumped--
I'm sorry. Okay, so, and I think I just want to, you know, second all of the concerns that have been raised so far, but also ask that this council uphold its obligation under the provincial statement of intent on municipal water supplies, and I have heard the argument that this is not, there is not a municipal water supply in Chester because it's not operated by the municipality. But I would suggest that that would be a municipal water delivery system. We have a water supply, there's a municipal water supply here, but it happens to be private wells, and the discharge, or I'm sorry, the recharge areas for wells in the municipality, I believe falls under this council's responsibility, and I would ask the solicitor-- Because it is also, I've also been told that this is a matter for the municipal planning strategy, but the municipal planning strategy is actually silent on protecting the municipal water supply where it is based on private wells. So I'm sure that the intent of the province was to protect everybody's well and to make sure that planning documents address that concern. I think that, I agree that a pause should be called and that that issue should be addressed legally. And I also wanted to just bring up, well, this feels like switching gears really suddenly, but I also wanted to mention my concerns about the highway commercial zone, which hasn't really come up in conversation much at the meetings that I've attended or watched, and I second what Brad Armstrong said today about, you know, everybody's getting to these different sections of the proposed documents in their time, and it's really complicated, as you said tonight, Mr. Warden, and if you don't speak municipal, it takes a long time to catch up to what's going on, and I really appreciate Mr. Surtivan's explanation about the different degrees of planning of hurdles that's really helpful for people, because when you read that something is permitted, you think that maybe it's allowed or it's only allowed up to a certain limit, but actually it's just the building permit, you know, there's a, it's a lot of clarity that is helpful in any case. I've finally gotten to the highway commercial zone, and I am concerned about two different measures that effectively, well, I'm concerned about a bunch of aspects of it actually, but what I would raise as an issue that definitely should be considered and discussed and there should be community engagement is the sort of sprawl provisions. So highway commercial can extend into R5 if it abuts, and it can abut even across a public road. So R5 properties that are adjacent to abut or are across the road from properties that are zoned highway commercial can be rezoned into highway commercial, without a special application. There's a provision, there are two different provisions. I think it's, I think it's 50 and 57, because it also works that highway commercial, or I'm sorry, other zones adjacent to highway commercial can also, I have all my notes and all the documents, it's very, it's very complicated, I find, and I think everybody needs to understand that highway commercial zoning can extend well beyond the limits on this map right now. And I'm just going to think for a minute because I think I have another matter. Well, if I have to hop up again with another document, I hope you'll let me in. Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon.
I'm Harry Goodman, 420 Highway 3. I just want to go back to the groundwork that was done in 2017 and why it hasn't been so ignored, and clearly stated as the conclusion that density was a known amount unless the water issue was solved. There was an extensive study done of all the topography around and the makeup of the soils and that sort of thing, all over the village, and the only area that they found that was a potential water supply was actually the Little River. So why are we wasting our time going around testing various sites within the village to see if we have above water, when there's already been a study done that is saying that it's not feasible for our large number of reasons? I looked at this whole document and read it a few times, and I encourage everybody to do it, and I would encourage the members of council to do it too, because I don't think you have. And because one of the recommendations-- One of the recommendations you're giving for, to solve the water problem in the village is you're going to lend assistance or give assistance so people can drill more wells? Like, that is not what we need in the village. We do not need more wells. That's just going to complete what we already have. And so please read the document and stop wasting your time drilling, looking for wells in places that you already have the information that they're not available. Thank you.
Much to my surprise, I find that I've been here for 30 years in the same house on the Chester Peninsula. I love the community a lot. I like it as much as I do now as I did 30 years ago. I was driving into Wolfville this afternoon, and I was amazed at how much vacant land I saw in the municipality of Chester. And I wondered, if the Village of Chester where we're trying to increase density, that probably makes up less than 1% of all the land in the municipality. Why don't we just forget about trying to make this bigger since we know we can't? On trying to expand and increase density and increase housing, just let it flow at its own normal rate, and instead we'll do all the other districts in the municipality a favor and help them build their ten-story or whatever they want to build, and they have all sorts of land, they have all sorts of water. So I suggest to you, listeners, just here and now, folks, to end this push for density.
Robert Collins, I live on 10 King Street. I echo a lot of points that have been made, but the fundamental, I mean, have you made progress since July 11? Yes, you have. The issue becomes at this point that the practical effect of the inclusion of the new section seven, which talks about the fact that there isn't, you know, that we have a real problem with potable water and we have a problem with sewage, is that those are visions and they haven't actually been reflected through in the land use document itself. The land use document itself still has much more information about what people are going to do about parking than it has about what people are going to do about water. And water is the bigger problem. I mean, parking is a problem, but water is a problem that is a major problem in the sense that drilling more wells in Chester, where the topography is such that the water supply is finite, and drilling more wells ain't going to make it any bigger. So you'd even need to include some sort of requirement that any new build in Chester has to rely on cisterns, both gray and white cisterns, for their water supply, and not tap into the existing act for that everybody else is taking from. The other comment, like the gentleman said, is I believe that the density in the municipality of Chester is something like 0.9 of a person per square kilometer. It's infinitesimal. There's so much land out there, it's, some of it's worth $80 an acre. That ain't a lot. The Village of Chester is, you know, you're pushing, in some parts of it, you're pushing a million dollars an acre. You can't build affordable housing on land like that. It's not going to happen. And that, the other thing that I pointed out in my letter, is that this bit that you can have a 10-unit residential thing, otherwise known as 10 apartments, in any commercial, anything that's zoned commercial, is completely out of character with what else exists in Chester, at least within the areas that are generally referred to as the core. And so I look at that and I look at where the, what is zoned core commercial, and lo and behold, the captain's house is right there, as well as a whole bunch of, you know, Duke Street, Queen Street, and if I were a developer, that's the low hanging fruit. Buy something like that and put up a great big 10-story unit, you know, sorry, a great big 10-unit property, each of which you could sell for between $1 and $2.5 billion, and that's a home run. So why are we, I mean, that's something that should definitely go back to the drawing board because you shouldn't, that should not be in the cards, and if you're going to call it core commercial, keep it commercial. Don't say, oh, we're going to sneak a big apartment building in here. Right. So I do think you've got more work to do. Have you listened? Yes. Have you made enough changes? I'm not so sure.
So I just wanted to clarify that the two policies I was referring to around the highway commercial are CC 50 and CC 57 for rezoning to HC-adjacent zones and properties. And the other thing I wanted to mention around the highway commercial is, I was just looking at the discussion paper, Future Development Along Highway 3 in Chester Village, which was just from 2022, and there were some proposals in there that met with a lot of community support, and I don't, I don't actually recognize the current highway commercial when I compare it to some of the stuff. I mean, there's some similarities for sure, but it doesn't feel like the same document, and I just think this is a great example of community feedback that could be used.
I just have one little comment. Well, one to start with, I am in total support of trying to limit the density until you find a solution for the water. Four to 10 units--
Name and certificate.
Oh, excuse me, Lloyd Robbins, 93 Granite Street. So I wish you would go back and rethink your strategy on that, but what was mentioned in the R5 zone, I think that it could be done with site plan amendment or something, and Garth explained that to us, that it takes all the rights of the development agreement process away. We can't have public meetings like this. We only can get involved at the end and present an appeal. I do not see why we should not have the development agreement process for anything that involves any density. People should be allowed to have an input, and I'm not sure why that is suggested as site planning amendment, and I'd ask you to look at that again, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Stone House, 10 King Street. I have only been here about five years, I think, maybe six, but I have a lot, of course. Several, several drills or drifters are dropped. That's worked. And then the sewage, I've seen it works there, bottom of King Street, but I've seen so many places in this area where the sewage still is a problem, a lot of trouble. So those are the first two things you have to do. We have health in the area, you're attracting people to come here. It's very important. So I'm trying to find out, we go to a meeting in July, and there was a public meeting. How many public meetings have, has this zone had in the last five years? Would there be a lot of them? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't know the number right off the top, but there's been a lot.
I'd like to know how many times, because I have only seen twice, two here in the last three years, I haven't had a public meeting. So I just want to say that I'm glad that you're working here, I'm glad you're here, I'm glad your effort is in place, that there are many problems we have, we have to attend first things first. I wanted to know also how many councillors who does this system have? How many councillors are--
Seven.
Seven, thank you. And are there seven councillors? Are they rotated every five years? Four, four years. Okay, thank you. Thank you for asking, I couldn't find them. And how many councillors are from the Village of Chester? One. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very clear, I'd like to know. And I then thought, oh, wow, the first meeting I went to was in July, and I thought, wow, this is good. I think there were more people then, in July. Just a smaller group. Just a smaller person this time, and you've got more space, so that's very good that you do. And then the changes that you made to do already by yourselves, all by yourself, you decided, boom, we're going to change this to that, this, this to that, this, and it will end up as this that you have for us, and I'm going, how does this become possible? How do these revised languages, how they recreate, they're refounded? I'm going, wow, I'll go to the second meeting, and it's done. We're still missing Toronto. So, you know, if all you're going to do is take all of this away, come back with another list somewhere, and you're going to take it to Toronto-- another list somewhere, and you're going to take it to Toronto, or sort of into LA, we'll find it all along the way to the city. And then we'll leave that, and we'll go to the left end. I don't know whether it is we can start at the right place. When you have sewage that works, you have water that works, you have streets that are wide enough, you have some sidewalks that we can have. These are the things that we need to have in this village. And I really need to just focus there first, focus there first, and accomplish all the work we've done already, a little bit to accomplish 30 days. Big changes from 12 to eight to four. All by yourselves. I don't see that you have any story by anybody that I know. And who are you going to take it for for the next meeting? And what, what lists do you have come up with? This list, if you came up with this one, drove me out of my mind. I read it, I went, I think I, I think I was stupid. I didn't understand, why don't you think all those decisions all by yourselves? Don't you have a public meeting process? Isn't there a voting process?
We've, we've had thirty public meetings since 2020.
2020? Excellent. Well, I'm planning to, I hope for the next 20, I'll be there. Thank you very much.
Then response to the job, if we do it all by ourselves. We've been working on this for four years, and we have public meetings at least once a month for a planning advisory. I don't recall, but maybe I missed it, I don't recall you being there. That's when you have the chance to voice your opinions, to make your suggestions, because from our room, which is the planning advisory group, which works with the planner and everyone else, is where we eventually come up with some kind of plan for this municipality and for the village. Now, I sit on both planning for the village and for the municipality. And I would, I would doubt that we see more than five people attending.
We're not invited. We're not invited.
This is our own, you know.
There's no publicity, I've never even heard that these existed.
There is always a notice of meeting.
Where?
Nobody interrupts you.
She mentioned four.
In the newspaper, in the listing of events that are going on within the municipality, so that it's not as if it's silent. And if you attend a meeting, you are always invited to join and speak, and we're willing to listen. And from what we gather, we try to come up with a plan that suits what you need and what we feel is best through your input for the municipality. Now, I don't know whether you like what we do or not, but it's pretty hard to know because it comes up in meetings like these where we have a large public meeting, looking at a plan that's been developed, and all of a sudden, everybody is up in the air. Well, my question is, where were you when we were working on this? Why did you not come and join the people who were trying hard to find a solution to water, to density, to roads, to all sorts of things? So when somebody says, says, we don't have any meetings, councilors live all by themselves, they most certainly did not. And had you been involved, maybe you wouldn't be sitting here to fight, complaining about part of a planning process that you don't want. So if you don't get involved, how on earth do you expect that we're going to come up with what pleases you if you never tell us? We're not. It's ridiculous.
I'm Miranda Zella, 45 King Street. Can't hear you. Can't hear you. Right, right. I'm Miranda Zella, 45 King Street. And I'm sorry my voice is short, but it's true, my voice is short. I am very sorry this woman's feelings have been hurt, but I cannot imagine why anyone would think that tone was appropriate. Nobody hears.
I can't hear you.
Everybody else's situation. No, no, no. So I can only speak for myself, but because of health problems, one of them is aphasia, I can't speak tonight, but some nights it's five seconds between every word. So I can't go to public meetings. I can't go in the morning because I also suffer from depression and I cannot go again. So I can't go to the ones on Thursday morning. I have what may be considered excuses, but that's why I haven't been at the meetings until July. So I'm not going to speak for Mr. Stonehouse. I don't know what his situation was. It's not my business to know. But the key is, we're here because we care. We pay taxes here because we love Chester. We only want the best for Chester. We don't want it to burn down. We all came way too close to them with the fire at the playhouse. Way too close. So we're grateful for everything we have, and I'm grateful that I've had this opportunity, but I ask that no one cast dispersions upon people they don't know. Thank you.
Sarah Philby, 3 Pleasant Street. I guess I would just want to add to that. One of the challenges, I am on the planning committee, but it is more often canceled than it's actually held. So for those of you who might not have been there to speak to it, probably it was because it didn't happen.
Okay, thank you, Sarah.
And in fairness, many of the, all the issues that we're raising tonight have been raised time after time after time. And so we do, we do appreciate, you know, that there has been some improvement, some listening to it. However, what we're trying to say is it's not far enough, and it just, it just is not far enough. Two other items that I wanted to raise. One is more in the, if you're going, if you are planning or when you plan to actually make this law, you need to also, and I identified this in my letter, but I never know how much from the letters actually get picked up. But in the environmental safeguards, it's still written as if the provincial government hadn't already absolved themselves of the responsibility of the Coastal Protection Act. So that needs to be fixed. And secondly, in section 10, there's a listing of ongoing future projects that likewise needs to be amended to include the urgent and necessary work to be done on coastal protection. We've got seawalls disappearing, and, you know, in some of them, especially on Water Street, there's a portion where the bets are on what day the truck is going to fall into motion. I might also add that, speaking of Water Street, and I do this on behalf of my sister who couldn't be here, but she and the rest of the residents on Water Street have signed a petition asking that it be rezoned from core commercial to residential, because it is today entirely residential. This is not a significant issue for those residents, and they, they need to see that addressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our name is Paul Kingston, and I'm on 66 Chandler Road. A little loud though. So I want to kind of move the conversation over the process a little bit. So I come from a governance background, and I appreciate everybody's comments. And this is my, I've only been here a year here in Chester, so this is, so this is a good exercise for you to see all the things that happen. So I don't feel as though I can really weigh in on some of these really needy issues, but one of the things that sticks out to me, this from a process and governance perspective, I understand all the municipal, provincial, I get all of these pieces. So one of the things that strikes me is a matter of process. There seems to be a considerable number of people here that are very frustrated with the process, or maybe haven't felt as though they could participate in it, or maybe as feel as though their ideas are not being heard. One of the things that strikes me is if, if we, if you pause this process and consider more consultation, which I believe is clearly required based on just my observation, but with that, then that means the old rules continue to exist.
That's correct.
And so if that happens, then that's a problem, or I think everybody is true. So, so it's the devil you know, the devil you know. So my, my, my thought is, and I don't understand your guidance of process, but I do understand this, that if you're going on something, it should be, I guess, some more stricter requirements in the existing planning standpoint now, if, to accommodate things like sewage and water and all this sort of stuff, then you might be able to do it with a more immediate term, while we get through a process that everybody agrees with. That, to me, seems to be more logical, just at least from how do you move this all forward from a governance perspective, in a way that's meaningful to everybody in the community. Anyway, I just wanted to share those comments, and I think they were helpful.
Those are great.
Okay, you want to make a couple more moving there? We're getting around to this. The sentences on the municipal website, you can sign up for new available notifications for council.
Okay, thank you. Well, I mean, we're, we're going, I don't know what time it even is, but I know we have, yeah, yeah, we'll see where to get somewhere.
Lovely.
Okay, and then, trying to keep it as short as we can.
Dudley Grove, 26 Friedus Hill Grove. All evening, I've looked up at our vision and goals, and when I look at them, I'm really excited about what I see up there. You know, our existing village character is a, is a point of reference, primarily residential, maintaining the character, control land use. But then I heard that there might be multi-unit dwellings, up to 20, 10 units in a structure by development agreement, and that would be desaled in the downtown streets, and I know we talked about this a minute ago, but Duke Street, Valley Street, Pleasant Street, Portion of King Street, Water Street, that's the core of our village. Right. That represents our village character, that represents our residential environment, all those things up there. And I don't see how a 10, 10-unit apartment building is going to fit in in any way, and I really would like to see that moved. Much. Thank you.
Robert Helen's 10 King Street. I'm just going to make a process observation, which is that once you pass this thing, you are not going to revisit it. And that is a fact of life. Once something like this actually gets passed, it's in place for years. And right now, it's got some, still got some significant problems with water and with the fact that you're going to do development before you can figure out what the problems are, before you can solve your underlying problems. And given how much other land there is out there that could be developed for any of these purposes that do not have water problems. I mean, I've talked to my friends who live in every place outside of the village, and there's lots of land and lots of water, and nobody's got any issues. So why are we trying to cram stuff into a village that has known issues? It just, and the fact is that you vote on this tonight, and it's done. And none of what we're saying tonight matters because it's all history. So that's my problem.
I think we've heard a lot of hard people, and a lot of it is very similar, and expressing their concerns, and we tried to pay attention to it the last time we all got together. I expect we will begin tonight. So unless somebody has something that is different or outside of what are to be discussed, I'm just asking if there is.
If there is going to be these participation things in the planning process, I never saw anything about it anywhere. And.
Do you mean with Carol? You mean at Carol's meetings?
Yeah, I get it. We got it.
Philip, John, Pleasant Street. Can you be honest with us and tell us what is the main driver to increasing the density within Chester, in within the village of Chester?
Property tax.
And, you know, I think there's a lot, I've been at a lot of these sessions before, and in not only this community but others. There are people who aren't here who want things that you don't know. And, and most, most of these types of meetings, I just want to tell you because it's the truth, most of these types of meetings is people who are opposed to what you're doing who show up, not those that are there. Nobody wants to. Nobody wants to. Nobody. Outside of the village. That's not solved the housing. No, 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 Chester can't help it, Seth. That's why we're both looking at the other intersections and other communities to try to solve that by putting infrastructure in place there, which can deal with that issue. We're not trying to solve the housing problem in Chester. No, we're not. And we're trying to listen to what you're telling us.
It seems that we're creating more problems trying to enhance the development within a small location when you have opportunities and much easier approaches.
This, this all started out like four years ago, not really even the housing issue so much, because of what, this is over 10 years where we're obligated to review the planning strategy, there's a process in place for reviewing the planning strategy, we had to follow it, and here we are four years later. And things change, they change all of the time.
You do represent the municipal housing and the city of your village.
That's right.
I just thought maybe I might speak teeth in the claims of the increased density and try, try and verify, in my mind, the truth. So maybe we'll go to a zoning map here, and we'll just go through one by one. So with the R1 zone, the yellow zone, there is zero change in density. Today, you can build a single unit, and you can build a guest suite. In the new plan, you can build a single unit, and you can build an accessory dwelling, which is effectively the same thing. So you're going from two to two, no change.
But you initially wanted a suite.
In the orange zone, today, every house that's been built prior to 2004, think about that, most of them can be converted to a duplex with a permit. In addition, one new duplex can be built every 90 years. So most of the properties, like virtually all the properties in that, excuse me, I'm just going to try to answer the question here. So currently, two units in the orange zone is possible on virtually every property. There may be a very small number of exceptions. In the new plan, what's, what's proposed, and this was again revised after the July 11 meeting, single unit and one accessory dwelling unit. So two to two, no change in the orange. In the core commercial. In the core commercial, the ten units by development agreement, that's in existence today. It's been existed since 2022. On Queen Street, there is a ten-unit building, it's existing. The owner of that property came forward and wanted to make changes to the unit composition. And in order to do that, a change to the current plan was needed. That was approved by council, and that is where the ten units through the core commercial came. So that's existing today, no change in the core commercial. In R4, the pink, that was previously the low-density residential zone. There is a slight increase in density in that zone. You can do up to three units by permit, so that is an increase in density in the pink. To me, that's the periphery of the village, that's not in the core of the village. In the R5 zone, right red, that is also an increase. Today, there is ability to do site plan and do multi-unit, but we're proposing give up to four units by permit, that is an increase in that zone. So in my mind, and, and I'm doing this as truthfully as I can, in the pink and the red, you can say there's an increase, otherwise it's the same.
But Garth, we had the whole thing about estate going to four, we've just had all these...
And because it's, it's something that planning is driving the process, they keep pushing that instead of looking at other areas. I don't understand, we have all these people here that are saying no to that. Density in the village of Chester is not gonna help anything with housing blocks whatsoever.
No, but what he's trying to just tell you is that there are really no change in the core.
No, because we have red herrings put out there to begin with.
Like, I, I, your focus would be so much in other areas of doing things, you shouldn't have a housing issue.
But we're, we're trying to revise the village plan, not...
I don't think that's, I don't think there's other things you can do.
We don't leave it as it is.
Andre, come on, he just said all this.
Yeah, we just did that.
I just heard, I'm reading a losing again, so I want to be sure that everybody's got it. We've just paraded for an hour, I can't wait. But everybody, increasing density, so I want to be clear on what we're going to do in this plan. So...
You sound so aggressive, sir.
Please let one person speak.
Not with a tone of aggression to ask you.
That's actually how I call it all the time.
Yes.
I'm sorry for it.
The pink and the red are the only areas where we're proposing density. And that was, actually by design, it was outside of the core. And I think there's an appreciation, and, and it was driven by this council. We wanted to protect the core of the, we understand the architectural character there. In this plan, it proposes controls for the architecture because we want to protect that. Because we don't want to have ugly buildings, really, that would shit in our village. They're forgetting that, forgetting that, and we don't want... Because we don't have this place, that's why. That's why, we don't want that to happen anymore, that's our goal. So if we didn't do this, we would get more ugly places like the ones on Queen Street. That's what we're trying to prevent with this plan. That's, that's the purpose. So, so if, if part of this plan, it actually has a lot of architectural control in the land, but toward the village. And so, but we also recognize that still need to live somewhere. And in the periphery outside of the peninsula, the water problem's hard to break. There, the village boundary goes out over the number three and stuff like that, but that's, those, those boundaries were set long ago. And it's kind of arbitrary where that line may, it could be a mile deeper into the mainland, it could be a little closer to the district. But we really want to protect it, and, and like, not just the wilds and, and the surrounding suburbs. That's like, that's like people figuring this out.
So they're protected and I'm not at King Street, is that true?
I've never heard of the King's Little Park. Like, a whole, when I say chapter pins, like, the whole thing that's enclosed by the front and back.
The highway to be.
That whole thing.
But if you understand...
We, we can't have it made.
I guess I'm trying to, I'm trying my best to try to explain what led us to this point. And, and I think we've heard in the last meeting that we didn't want to have any density in Chester. And firstly, everything in Chester, as we think of Chester, has been dialed back to exactly today. This plan is that. And, and it adds layers of architectural control on top so that we don't get ugly buildings like what's on Queen Street. There are some increases on the outside, like as you're driving towards the golf course or if you're on the other side of one of, or the number three. That, that's the only place where it actually adds any density.
I, I can't have it made, like, so are you, finish, Andre? Okay, so I'll take a copy. Derek, okay, no, let's wait till, I want to finish that in public session. So if there are one or two people want to speak, then that's it. Okay, you're, I saw your name first. He's gonna get to the mic here.
I have to turn it, I was partway turning it off, so I have to wait till it turns off, and then wait.
I would turn it off just yet.
My name is Tina Stewart, I live at 29 Duke Street, Chester. I think everyone here is happy with the thought of you preserving the architecture and the integrity of the village. My concern, and what I believe is the concern of virtually everyone here, is your report of 2017 that said with our current water situation, we cannot sustain any increase in density in this village. While I acknowledge that this new plan tonight does reduce what you had proposed in July, it is still an increase in density before we have addressed how we are going to supply water to the new people and still have water for the people currently living here. But, but my, my takeaway, I was at the meeting on January 11th, I believe, the, the message was clear that people's major concern is water. That is our concern, we certainly appreciate that you're looking after the architecture and trying to keep the beauty of the village, and I think that's, we are all in support of that. It's the water issue that is, or and sewage, that is the big concern for people. And it seems to me that you haven't addressed how you're going to deal with that before you add the density to the village.
Thank you. Two more groups of numbers, probably, and then the public session. Yeah, white and black.
Wilson.
Good evening, my name is Nancy Oxford, and I live on 513 Mont Street in Chester. Twelve, thirteen years ago, when we started looking to purchase a home here, we were shown three, and two in particular I was interested in. One of those residents, the agent, asked in the buying settlement that there was enough water to sustain a family of four. The deal fell through because they could not guarantee that a family of four would be able to get water all the time. We went on looking, we finally settled out where we reside now. The problem where we were looking, that problem still exists. That resident, that residence cannot guarantee that it could sustain a family of four for water. So, that was thirteen years ago, and here we are, having the same problem. My suggestion would be that council would look at solving the problems we have now before going forward, looking for more residents to come in because it's going to be another burden on our lives. So my, and I'm hearing amongst our, our guests here that we should be solving the problem of the water, the roads, the ones we have now. Solve the problems, the one, the problems we have now. And after that is solved, then we could look forward to moving progress. I'm all for progress. But why take on another problem when our problems are not solved now? Thank you.
Thanks so much. I just want to say that water is definitely very top of the list, but the density introduces, just to emphasize that it's not just the water repercussions of density. There's the road, there's parking, the traffic, the, you know, the, the nature, the character of the building also changes. We've seen a new house go up on Queen Street. It's totally permitted, by building permit, and, but it's, you know, it's, it's a well, a new drilled well that has affected the well next door, and that neighbor has to deal with that. It's a height that has taken away the use. I mean, these are the, these are other implications of density as well that interfere with the running of the tanks. We don't want it just to boil down to just being about water, I think that's not so important. And I also want to say that there's great community engagement right now, and I know it feels sort of painful, but it's actually, it's really, there's an opportunity here maybe. And, and I really felt, like I said at the outset of my first comments, about how heartening it was to see the uptake or the interest from other, from council members from other districts and what's going on. And I just want to thank you, and going forward, take care.
Thank you. Okay, we've closed the end of the public, public input session. And I believe, Derek, you had your hand up, you wanted to speak. So it's time for us to decide just what we're gonna do next.
I'm trying, I'm trying not to keep it too long, the Blue Jays aren't playing tonight, so we'll be late. At least I'm starting again, so, good night. Thank you all for coming, this meeting, the last meetings. Thank you for your letters. I read them all, even the three Willie sent me, so he made sure he got one to the bay, and one at home, one in the office, and one in the municipal building, so he made sure. But I've read it, I didn't read it three times. I've, I've read them all, I've listened to your comments, I appreciate what your concerns are. Reason I'm speaking now, this is gonna be my last opportunity, I'm not reoperating, I have four more meetings of council and I'm gone. And your new councilor's probably in the room today. But there's a lot of people engaged, so maybe you might want to consider putting your, if I say your mind, your mouth is in wrong. But I think we're gonna have plenty of people doing that. The, this is a process, I've been on council three years. Benny Danielle's term, she started, it became our M L A. And we've been dealing with this for the three years, I've been at many meetings, I've listened to a lot of people. A lot of issues expressed tonight, the last meeting I've heard before, I've also heard the contrary ones. A lot of people grew up to me and said, I'm not gonna speak without being a master of me if I speak. You know, there are, there's a contribute, it's not perfect. This, this plan is not perfect, it's the best we can come up with, with the effort we made and time we've had. We've addressed a lot of issues. Those of you who have been engaged for the last four years know that this is not where we've started. We started with the larger lots on the peninsula, we got rid of that. But we had issues on the back harbor, and down by the boatyard, we met with the residents, the business owners down there, we put things in that satisfied them, and we made, I would say, peace in the valley. We dealt with the issues on East Wind, and we dealt with some issues on Water Street. There's still more to deal with on Water Street. As Sarah Philby said in her comments, there's a stretch of five or six buildings that need to be looked at. And I think, contrary to what others said, we put this plan in place and nothing changes in fact. It is a living document, it does change, and it will change. And we also dealt with Fort Le Creve. Fort Le Creve is not protected, we forget, sort of, the history of that, but that is a real problem. We dealt with that, I think we did a good job, not only did we acquire... It's not gonna become a problem again, it's perpetual now, I mean, nothing has ever carried its toll. But I can't imagine that any changes will ever happen to that, so we made a lot of things. Carol, your comments, I understand where you're coming from. You know, you are Chair of P A C, you do a good job on that. You know, what I'm gonna suggest at the end of the day, making you busier and Sarah ordered more meetings. And there's also opening up P A C, anyone up there may want to consider applying for it, because I think P A C has become busier. But I think, you know, it was easy to put up a false premise and attack it. And I think there's a lot of that going on. You know, and I think, I like to, I mean, I, I live through gun debates, I mean, this is, you know, similar in some ways, you know, put up a false premise and then you attack it. Density is not increasing in, in the upside areas where we want a little bit maybe, but not in the core of the village, not, not a increase in density. And we can thank your, you know, Peggy, and Barry, very vocal on that since you've made some great presentations. And, and not only Peggy but others, you know, the people up there are, have a lot of work and we appreciate that. This is not my plan, this is the village's plan. And what we're trying to reflect is what the village wants. But I don't like to have an argument over the increase in density, when in fact there's no increase in density. But we're also not gonna tell someone to make a lot. We can't do this, you can't build it. If you have a lot, you have a right, if you read your comments, but I was, there are not that many vacant lots left. But we're not able, and I'm not inclined, to tell you, really obvious, to make a lot. We're not gonna tell you, you can't build one because you're gonna increase density in a building, it's not gonna happen. We are looking for water, and we're not, we are looking really for water, that's not what's happening. We're looking inside.
He's just sounding like from the...
Anyway, we're looking outside, it's, I don't believe that the source of our water problem is gonna be found in the village, but inside the village, we won't have to bring it in. I think that's the reality, and that's what we're doing. We have, I think, four more wells for him in this year. And we have something, the one in Mary Cholwell, someone we've heard of, we thought that had good potential. But it's not gonna work, but there's some other places they've identified. It's something we know is a problem, it's something we're gonna try to do it. The big issue, the two big issues that I see regardless, the Valley Road Commercial and the ten units, and, but that's in the existing plan, that's not something that we are proposing new. That's in the existing plan.
You make it right.
I absolutely agree with you, it doesn't make it right, but it's there now. And if we do nothing, it's gonna stay there. If we do nothing, the hotel will probably come back. If we do nothing, sure. So what I'm going to suggest, well, I don't know, just, that's an issue. We've identified it as an issue, it's an issue that came in late in the prime, the, because it was not on the radar to most people, you're going, but that's not identified. The issue on Duke and Water, that's an issue, we have to deal with it. And, and I think we will. I would suggest, and what I, I'm not gonna make a motion to that, I'm not sure what the board was intention is as far as motions concerned, but where my head is in it right now is to approve the plan as described by Garth today. But simultaneously make a motion, we further the newer issue. But simultaneously make a motion, refer to the newer issues, the issues that are, we deem to be further studied through Planning Advisory Committee, to deal with. I'm just telling you what I'm thinking. And if I make a motion in the past, that's the way it's going to be. And then, well, that's the way the system works. Someone's got to make a motion either to kill them. I think...
And you're representing all of us.
I think, I'm representing everybody. The plan that we have proposed is better than the plan that's in place. And the only way to get rid of the one that's in place is to pass the one now. And the areas that we've identified as problem areas, send a V A C to come back with recommendations and make good changes on those. So, you know, Mr. Ward, I assume what you're planning to do is just... One of the letters I got today was a very thoughtful letter. Actually, the last letter I got in my group, I don't think it was in the pod, I got it about five o'clock this afternoon. And the suggestion he made was, you're going to hear a lot of things at the meeting tonight. He recommended that council reflect on what they heard, but don't make a decision tonight, because this is a big decision that takes. But I don't think we're running out of time. If we don't do it within the next six weeks or so, it's going to go, we're going to have new councils, there's going to be new faces around that table, and it'll start from scratch. And we're going to reflect on the same problem in the existing plan. So, I just, what I do, you do now on the revolve, I'm going to reflect on this. But I thought it was only fair to let you know where my head is right now. But also, thank you for your thoughtful presentations. I know it's heartfelt, and hopefully, at the end of the day, we can replace the existing plan with a better plan and move forward, fix the problems that continue to exist until we get it right. And trust me, it's never going to be perfect. Anyway, thanks for your time, thanks for listening.
Oh, that's a different type. Then the other will work better. Anyway, I have a head with the paper plan. I mean, we've heard a lot. I, I, you know, I mean, I think that there are a couple options. I mean, I already have a perfect, oh, I think there are. But, you know, if we, if we adopt a plan like you suggested and then refer for amendments to some of those key areas, that's one. If we don't adopt a plan and just basically reiterate the existing plan, I don't think that that helps, really, either. So, yeah, because it actually allows more things to take place, a lot, less architectural control, less, a lot of things, so... But I think that it may well be that people aren't moved or quite prepared to take that decision. But next, we get council. If you need time to think about it, we have to decide on a path forward one way or the other. Something has to happen. And if we, if we don't move forward with this plan and then recommend to staff to make some changes to the problem areas that are most specific, then we're going to have to leave the plan that exists. And that's the one we're looking with for the next couple years without we start moving. But we, we're on the timeline of the problems. We're, we're, we have to do something. You have to tell them that there is a plan that's in place. Thank you, Andre.
This is my mic is actually a lot better. Hello, boy. I kind of, I think I'm echoing your comments, and maybe with different words. But what I read from this room is that, in general, like, maybe eighty, seventy percent, I don't know what percent, but of the plan is acceptable. And there's some other problems in it that need to be addressed. Should we turn the whole plan back, put the whole thing on pause, then that seventy percent of good things won't carry on, and we won't have those protections until it's dealt with. And if we proceed as it is, then at least those protections will be in place, and then we can deal with the thirty percent. I feel like, to me, in my mind, I would like to have those in place so we can prevent more Queen Streets from happening. And then, we can, over the next few months, work out the rest of these probably, at least engaged people. Hopefully, they will remain engaged, and we can, and we can address the issues. I don't feel like it's dead, I don't feel like it puts it on the shelf, for me. But, you know, that's where my head's at. And if you recall, today, I would put it through with those provisions that House of Wells highlighted before. I think there's no problem with that. You know, I live in East Chester, I grew up, but I grew up on the streets of Chester. My business is just on the fringe here, just off the outskirts here. I love this village, I mean, and every day, I don't want a resident, either. So, you know, I think this adds the protections that'll prevent that from happening for now, and then can address these other underlying issues separately. And hopefully, you'll all be engaged now that you're acutely aware of the process. I think that would be great, and those are my comments.
I feel like I think that happens.
I got to try and run this meeting.
This is the tip-top one.
What I'm looking for is some direction from council. Like, do you want to take a week to give this some thought? Want to do something to see?
Jerry wants to talk. Okay, it's over.
Next Thursday.
Jerry.
Next Thursday.
Jerry, it's over. Jerry can talk for council, that's good. Sorry. He can do public... Yeah, he's so... Sorry.
Or reject it, one or the other, you know? But we have to do something, something has to be played. I don't know, it can't, I'm not making questions about how we assess this vote.
Talking about...
So, something has to happen.
I'm going to have you talk to you afterward, I can't open it to one person in the public unless I open it up.
I would like to talk about. I suggest we leave our decision till next Thursday.
Okay.
I'm going to open up the expression, I've read all the letters on the platform. Maybe what the planner...
Well, yeah, like, whatever option, what, what, you know? I can, I have a half an idea, but I mean, if there are details I'm missing, I'd like to be told what they are.
I want to go on record, this is my last opportunity to discuss this many people. Over my head at this point, I think that was only fair to do. Motion to adjourn or make a...
No, defer till Thursday, I think.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, I like to defer the decision till Thursday. And I thought it was only appropriate to let everybody that stayed. Because I am the councilman for the village, to know where my head was. I take it very seriously. And the promise I made when I ran for council is that I'm going to listen to everybody and use my best judgment. But I understand your plan, not my plan. And I think you're going to follow the advice you got from various city gentlemen's afternoon just to spend a week to reflect, and we'll hold on this Thursday.
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion to that.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second discussion. I think we're going to have a meeting, then maybe the planner can put together a comprehensive list of what we would actually turn back to P A C if we're going to, if we're looking at that as well. For me, that's a good fogging. If we were going to make a decision tonight, that would have been a problem. So if we can get that list of what we want, issues we want to look at specifically...
Well, you have to tell them what they are.
Well, I think he needs to come up with a list of what he heard, and we can pick him out on Thursday.
Adele, I suggest I move the council for District Five. I just, from everything that I've heard, one of the issues I do have to look at is, it's pretty clear you don't want density. Doesn't make a rough science to figure that out. Whether it's a water issue or setting that aside. What I get from the crowd is you don't want density of any kind. Mr. Master, an hour ago, said just leave it alone in the village. That's what I'm hearing. I mean, I could be wrong, but I don't want to throw the whole plan away either. But we need to, and I think that's what the plan will do. Anyway.
Any other discussion? All are your favorite. Oh, it was my most careful.
Good job, Joe.
Motion for secure. Secondary question.
Extraordinary, is there actually, like, a last meeting?
I'll say so, sir.